I'm gonna need a motion to approve the agenda.
So, second, but may we move nine to ahead of reports, please?
The best of her report, so I'm gonna put that number nine now.
I just want to comment on non-agenda items.
Correct, it's gonna go right after public comments, is that what you wanna get?
Yes, that's what I wanted, please.
I'm agreeing with that question.
Okay, I'll on papers.
I'm adding.
Okay, so with that, did I do the agenda approval agenda? We did not. Got a motion to approve the agenda that had been modified by that what?
Well, I made it.
Oh, you did already?
I said I was okay with that.
Yeah, we're okay with that.
We're okay.
We're good.
Then we're moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment on items that are not on the agenda? There are none, we will then move to what is one of the number nine, which is the item number...
Nine.
Nine. A board member discussion regarding city council resolution opposing KK. So let's begin with Mr. Malloy, does he want me to start or does he wanna do this?
I'll just kinda read what the intro is.
Okay.
At the August 30th meeting, there's gonna be city council voted to oppose Measure KK passed resolution. On prior to that meeting, we're city council voted to oppose Measure KK. We had a board meeting on the 27th, and it was expressed at that meeting that once the city took action, there would be public interest in the school board discussing their possible opposition to Measure KK. And that was discussed at the September 13th board meeting that we held as well. And so we are, have added it to the agenda for discussion of the board. So I'll pass it back to Phil.
Um, I was contacted by Rob Zersmied from the city council, who asked us to put this on as agenda, plus we had some members, republicans totally, who had asked us to put this on.
I'm asking Bob Waylon.
And you asked my Bob Waylon as well. I have something that Rob sent me that I can read, but before we do this, I think we should get public comment on this. So before I read this, I think it's a little bit long from Rob. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this? Just please identify yourself, I don't care who ours, we all do, but nonetheless, each person if you can identify yourself with the record.
Okay. Hi, school board members and district leaders, I'm Peggy Wolf. Speaking as a parent and citizen in Laguna Beach, I really hope that you'll adopt a resolution to support the city council's position against Measure KK. I've also been part of committee trying to make sure that Measure KK does not pass. It's not good for our community, it's a land use issue, and it's not good for our kids. And we are here to support our kids, and I hope you'll support that. That this group is a really good group that is trying to fight Measure KK. Thank you.
Can I ask the public not to applaud? It actually technically is incorrect to applaud or make any statement or support or opposition to people at this public meeting. It's supposed to be information discussion. I understand your motion.
Hi, I'm Julia Chesley, and I've spoken to you previously, as you know. So, as I continue to work on the jury committee quays opposing Measure KK, I continue to gather more information, I reach out to gather more information. And today, I reached out to a man named Mike Darnold. He works, you know Mike Darnold. So I came across him through the community coalition meetings that I go to with Marcy Metnick. Anyway, I called him today, and he explained to me how they've been able to reduce their drug instances in the high school, Dana Hills High School, by eighty-five percent. And as I'm listening to him telling me all these wonderful things that they've done, you know, he's saying it's a three-point approach with the parents and the students and the instructors and teachers. And he's been working in there for nine years. And it's, that's a huge shift, that's so significant. And he couldn't tell me enough how important it is to have the city council on board, the school board on board, and the parents on board. I know that every parent I see too is on board, the city council as we know is on board. Our missing component is the school board. And to have that united front as a community with the leaders, which all of you are leaders in our community, it will make all the difference for our children. We're not talking, I could go on and on about all the different things that involve this Measure KK, but I'm here to talk about the kids, we're all here to talk about the kids. And the kids need our protection, they need your protection. This is not about adults making their own choices. These are kids who cannot speak for themselves, they can't even think for themselves sometimes. And we have to help them, we have to protect them, you have to help them protect them. And so again, I ask you to please, please, you know, make a motion to have a measure against, whatever, what's the term?
It's a motion.
A resolution against Measure KK. It's vitally important. And I was thinking, you know, what could be the reservations here by the board? And, you know, maybe I've heard it's a land use issue, it's this or that, but this really is an issue for our children. In these community coalition meetings I've been in, Bob Bellinger has been there. And he has talked at length about all of the different incidences he's had in trying to help the kids with the drugs. One time it stands out in my mind was this kid that was gone two weeks in school, and he had to actually go to the house, he found the child on the family couch smoking weed, which the kid had been doing for the last two weeks. So your employee is spending his time with this issue. And while Dana Hills is having eighty-five percent success, we're setting ourselves up for a huge problem. For all of the things that we're trying to do, we've got traffic, there are two dispensaries in Laguna Beach. And again, do you wanna say something?
I just wanna tell you, your time's up, I'd like to extend your courtesy for this other.
Thank you. I sort of wanna say, again, I just implore you to absolutely oppose Measure KK and follow what the city council has done. Unite with all of us, so that we can fight this and protect our children. Thank you.
Hi, Amy Kramer.
Can you just say?
One second, are people that are not able to hear, am I have?
We're not getting any speaker sound over here.
So we don't have a speaker sound right now.
Okay.
And it does not speak with our, our system.
So we'll try to all speak up, Amy, when you introduce yourself to...
Speak loudly.
Yeah, because the president's facing us, and we'll try to project as much as we can. People really just can't hear what we're saying. And you're in the very back, kinda raise your hand, Mike Morrison, you'd be great with her very farst position it looks like. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Amy Kramer, mom, community member, here speaking again on defeat Measure KK. And like Julia said, I know we've spoken a lot about this being a land use issue, but the true reality of having these dispensaries in town is it creates a greater opportunity for our kids to access marijuana. In Los Angeles alone, there are more dispensaries, medical marijuana dispensaries than there are schools. Now, those high school kids are leaving directly after school and going to these dispensaries. And they've been doing it in Dana Point as well, until they finally shut one down that was across the street, no, that happened to be an illegal one. So my point to you is that if we don't nip this in the bud now...
No, my goodness.
We are going to have a lot of problems, and I think that as community leaders, you're going to want to nip this in the bud, pun intended, and stop this now, so that we don't have this issue. Or do whatever it is that you can to help stop this. People look to you for your leadership, you are esteemed members of the community. You know, parents are looking to you, families are looking to you, community people are looking to you guys. And I very much hope that you will adopt a resolution to support the city council and to help defeat KK, because it's super important for our community. Thank you so much.
Mark Oder, and I'm here tonight as a resident and longtime resident in Laguna Beach. You know, I have an expression, and I've used it before, it's on the street. And those that know how I talk, it's, you know, what's being talked about? You go to Lowe's, you run into Rob, and Rob starts discussion as what's the school board gonna do? Well, I don't determine that, but it is a discussion that is out there with our members in our community. And I would personally love to see the school board have a resolution regarding this, having raised a child in this town, and who went to college in this town, not too many people can say, is that I survived the culture of the drug issues in this town. And we all know it exists, so we shouldn't close our eyes to it. I do believe having two facilities right here in town will bring crime to the area. And I just feel very startled. We know that Laguna has changed over the years. We know when I used to vacation here years and years ago in the seventies, it was a drug culture. It has changed, it is one all the way almost to the other side in some degrees. And yet now we're looking at putting two facilities. And if what happens in November proceeds, and now it's recreational, then where do we go from there? So I would ask the school board to consider a resolution, thank you.
Anyone else? Chris Hills?
Thank you, Howard Hills. Just before he died, Bobby Kennedy was interviewed by Robert Frost. Robert Frost asked him how he defined leadership. And Bobby Kennedy said, "Well, I'll tell you what it isn't. It isn't like the French general who looked out the window and saw his troops marching off to war and said, 'Wait, I must lead you.'" And, but he said that what leadership is, is when you inspire other people to exercise their best qualities. And I think that, you know, the board is being called upon to provide that kind of leadership right now. I mean, if you listen, I really would like to associate myself with the comments that Peggy Wolf and Julia Chesley and Amy Kramer made, because, you know, we're really here talking as parents and as grandparents about our kids and about keeping our kids safe. And, you know, one thing I can tell you is that I hire kids from Laguna Beach High School to sometimes work around my yard and my house with me. And I've actually observed a couple of kids that I've known for a long time. And I hate to say it, but by the time they got out of Laguna Beach High School as seniors, I actually believe I detected a loss in some of their verbal skills from when I knew them when they were in eighth and ninth grade. And I saw that happen to kids when I went to Laguna Beach High School. My yearbook, if you take, if you go back to my yearbooks and look at the kids, my fellow classmates when they were in eighth and ninth grade, and then some of them who were at high risk, ended up by the time they were seniors, you could see the effects. And the marijuana that is available now is a lot more high potency than the marijuana that was available now. You know, I've made mistakes as a parent, I've gotten some things very right, and I've gotten some things very wrong. What I've sort of learned the hard way is that when everything else is said and done, what kids are counting on adults to do is not let them have choices they can't handle. And a lot of times when kids are angry at their parents, it's because the kids know that their parents have given them more choices than they can handle, and the kids are unsafe, and they're angry at their parents for it. And if this dispensary goes in, there will be criminal activity, if not organized criminal activity, that will come with it. There will be related crimes that are in the nature of personal assault crimes that are associated. And it's just gonna really degrade, you know, it's the old thing. Do you wanna live in Bedford Falls, or do you wanna live in Pottersville? And I think we all wanna live in Bedford Falls, and so I would just like to associate myself with the comments of the people that proceeded.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for letting me address you. My name is Deborah Sussinger, I'm a registered nurse and a resident of Laguna Beach. And I just wanted to mention, if you didn't already know, that not only would this initiative allow two dispensaries in Laguna Beach, but it would be the only two dispensaries in South Orange County. So if you weren't aware of that, I want to make you aware of that, thank you.
Hi, Tami. I'm Tami Darian, again as parent, community member. I guess what I'm hoping to accomplish is to give you guys a reason why you should support this as a school board. And when I looked online, I was looking around to other school boards, looking around to other, you know, other references. And when I looked into Colorado in particular, and there's Jefferson County, and they did a full report, full blown blow report, on, you know, several aspects. But some of the things I wanted to touch on was the educational impact that they referenced. And one of the points they make is the normalization of marijuana has caused a significant reduction in teenagers' perception of the risk of marijuana use, a significant factor in the rate of use. So just the board not taking any position in my, in my perception, and what I would envision their perception would be, where do you stand, and where should they believe? If you're, if the board isn't wanting to take a stance, what are they, you know, what's their perception of leadership? So I wanna touch on that. Also, regular use of marijuana among Colorado youth ages twelve to seventeen is ranked fourth in the national, in the national, and thirty-nine percent higher than the national average. Again, correlating completely to legalization, dispensaries, the whole picture. Eighty-nine percent of school resource officers, meaning those people that are monitoring policing schools, surveyed have seen an increase in marijuana incidents in the schools since recreational marijuana was legalized. And data shows that thirty-two percent increased in drug suspensions and expulsions in schools since medical marijuana was commercialized and dispensaries implemented in Colorado. Right there, several educationally impacted statistics. In June of two thousand fourteen, a survey of one hundred school resource officers, again, policing schools, and again, this is in Colorado, revealed that eighty-nine percent have seen an increase in marijuana-related incidences since recreational marijuana has been legalized. Of those resource officers, sixty-one percent reported they believe students are getting, you know, marijuana from friends and who obtain it legally from their parents or dispensaries. Anyway, that's just a side issue, but I just, I guess I wanna close in saying, when I look at the board policies and the role of the board, and I reference with the board shall work with superintendent to fulfill its major responsibilities, which include, the fifth item is providing community leadership and advocacy on behalf of the students, the district's educational program, and public education, or to build support within the local community and at the state and national levels. I would hope that it's reciprocal, I would hope that we would also support our community in return. Thank you.
So anyone else that would like to speak, that's for the public? All right, that being the case, then I would like to read with at least a part of this information that Rob Zersmied sent me. This is written, I think, not by him, but for by the committee who is opposed to KK. And so you would have to understand that's the point of view comes from, but because...
It comes from the city council.
It comes from a city council member, but I don't know that it was written by the city council. It says together, advocating and defeat KK. It looks like it's by the organization who opposes it. I just wanna be fair, because I don't think Rob Zersmied wrote this. I think he likes what this says, but I wanna be as clear as I can be about who says what tonight, so we don't get someone quoting this paper saying, "Rob said this," or "Rob didn't say that," or vice versa. Okay, so here it is, it's quick facts about Measure KK is bad for Laguna Beach, and obviously it's written by someone who opposes it. Measure KK is sponsored by outside business interests. We saw a call, quote, "Citizens' initiatives to repeal the city of Laguna Beach marijuana dispensary ban", unquote, was written and placed on the ballot after paid signature gathering campaign by well-funded but obscure outside interests. It is not a Laguna Beach initiative, and has no input from city government, local medical professionals and public safety officials, or Laguna Beach residents. Beyond town, pro KK forces have formed a PAC, capital P-A-C, Laguna Locals for Sale and Regulated Medical Access. Yes, on KK, I guess that's the PAC. Funded by a mysterious ten thousand dollar donation from, quote, "Laguna Beach Joint Venture", end quote, which is an organization based in Woodland Hills, California. These proponents are not locals, and they do not propose anything close to a well-regulated access. If passed Measure KK would create a marijuana ban, Laguna Beach would be the only city in the southern half of Orange County with operating dispensaries. The measure would also allow more dispensaries than our population requires, and would attract thousands of out-of-town buyers, creating an additional source of traffic and parking problems. It would eliminate local control and oversight. The city would not be able to select responsible vendors, review business plans, security issues, or require the operator to secure use permits other than those with a business must obtain. It would provide no additional public safety funding. The city would be on its own to fund the additional public safety resources that the operation of these highly lucrative dispensaries will necessitate. These experience, the experience of other communities suggests that these all cash businesses attract crime and violence, as well as crowds of buyers. Says it promotes marijuana use for kids. Although dispensaries cannot be located near schools, they can operate next to preschools, daycare centers, or parks. The presence of any, their presence in any location in town would send a mixed message to our children and youth about a drug and U.S. enforcement agency that still categorizes as a controlled substance. It would open the retail door. If the popular statewide measure sixty-four passes, legalizing recreational use of marijuana to anyone over the age of twenty-one, the first operators to get dispensary license in Laguna Beach would quickly become regional marijuana dealerships, servicing the recreational marijuana habits of South Orange County and beyond. And again, no city oversight control. And it goes on to say, "We live in Laguna Beach because of the safe, healthy, friendly atmosphere and environment it offers. Measure KK eliminates local control while threatening our neighborhood, our kids, our village, and the quality of life we've worked so hard to preserve and improve. All for someone else's profit, please vote no on KK." And then it goes on to ask for a donation to this committee who is opposed to KK. He then attached a copy of the resolution, which I will not read, it has where "as" is in, but basically says that the city council opposes KK. Okay, having read that, I wanna be very thoughtful that everyone has one point of view, I'm sure there are others. Since I don't have the other point of view, I'm not going to look for anything on it, but I'm sure if anybody's around, they can speak to it. But let me make a couple brief comments. Number one, this is a difficult issue, just as when we face a social post ordinance, we have to look at the relationship of anything that's happening in city government to schools. And while I saw a very direct relationship with the social post ordinance, because it was aimed at parties for kids who primarily were coming from our schools, I thought at that time it was very important to take a very active role in that. And of course, as you know, we came under some pretty good criticism by some folks for doing that. I stand by what I said. I think that drug and alcohol use providers is one of the worst things that can affect kids. And here's the thing about it, you know, a lot of kids use drug and alcohol, it's just fine. But you just never know when those kids take that first drink or that first marijuana, which of that group will end up being like this one friend of mine from college, who is probably the smartest of my four friends who went off to college together, and ended up just in a life that was, I can't even tell you what happened to him. So from my personal perspective, I am opposed to this measure. I have absolutely no interest in marijuana, the use of marijuana, the promotion of marijuana. And I'm highly opposed personally to it. And now here comes the button. But I think each of us should be able to express our opinions tonight in this meeting. And I hope every one of you takes a position. And since Carol's not here, she asked me to speak for her. My personal position is I oppose KK, I oppose use of marijuana. I voted for, as a member of the school board, what was probably one of the toughest anti-drug and alcohol policies around. And it's super hard on kids, like Chloe over here and her classmates. And penalties are severe for drug or alcohol use. For that reason, I'm firmly opposed to it. Having said that, I also fear sometimes we will get pulled into local politics in situations where the relationship is more attenuated and more difficult. And I understand, I'm very sympathetic to everybody's argument I heard tonight, but if I think the best way, my personal opinion, is the best ways for each of us to express our views tonight, to oppose it as an individual, or to favor it as an individual, and to leave it at that without a resolution. Because I don't think the resolution is gonna add anything. It will be a bunch of things with "whereas" is, it's gonna say the same thing we're gonna say tonight most likely. So from me, here's my statement, I oppose KK. I oppose the use of marijuana and alcohol for anyone under the age of eighteen, or even sometimes twenty-one. I'm sometimes troubled, because I keep, what about the military, what about this and that? I'm not a hundred percent on that, but certainly for kids in high school, this is not anything. Maybe you can make an argument, and some kids make it, and unfortunately, some parents make the argument. It won't hurt for kids to drink and smoke marijuana. But it's hard to make the argument it will help. You can make the argument, maybe most kids can get through it and get okayed. That's probably true, it's reality is reality. But you're never gonna know, and it's ridiculous, which of those kids, that will be the end of their study habits, that will be the end of... Mr. Hills points out very eloquently, it could be a downtrend in their whole life. And that could be alcohol, that could be drugs, and many times, like my friend, a combination of the two. Now, for Carol's point of view, she couldn't be here tonight, she asked me to express that she is also opposed to Measure KK. She is opposed to it for a lot of reasons. She said she wanted me to say that she doesn't like the fact, and I agree with this, that when it said Laguna Beach up as one of the only cities in the state, and the only one in South Orange County that has dispensaries. I know that you have to have prescription on all the arguments for it. Very sympathetic to people with cancer who wanna seek this. I don't think it belongs in this town, and I think that's what Carol's saying as well. So with that, I'd like to pass it on to anyone else who would like to make a comment.
I'd like to get a little more background in differences in the district in general. And because this is not the first time that the board has taken a position on dispensaries in town. And to make it clear also, that the city has an ordinance on the books, because I did discuss this with Bob Waylon, and I asked him what happened to this, and I'll give you the rest of the background in a minute. And he said, "Because this is a voter initiative, it would then override the city ordinance." We've had drug and alcohol task force for years. We used to meet monthly, we used to have law enforcement and city council people that came to those meetings, we met here. That evolved out of that into the community coalition, because they wanted to expand it to include Mission Hospital and other groups. So it, then there was the advice that the district should not be heading that up. It really was a community-based organization. So, but going, now going back to, I'm gonna go back to a lot of yours. We had a lot of those one-shot approaches, which then, as the information has told us, that those don't work for kids. But this has been an ongoing issue for as long as I had the students in the schools. So that's back into the eighties. It's not, it will always be an issue, because, you know, those things aren't available, and a lot of parents have them in their homes and don't secure them. So I mean, there's, it's not, and I think in recent times, we've tried to take a different approach, which is trying to protect our students, trying to get the education out, trying to get parents to understand the enormous responsibility they have besides what we have as a district, and providing it from an educational and a support background. Because that's where we have a real impact on students, and I believe that's what's happened. Mike Darnold used to come to some of our drug and alcohol meetings. He was a resource for us because of the work he's done in Dana Hills. And it's, so now let me add that one piece. It was brought to the attention of whoever was in charge at that time. It said that there was a doctor who had a clinic in town, down by where Shirley's Bagels is, and he was issuing the medical cards. So the timeframe would be after that was, after California passed the approval of medical marijuana. There was also a quasi-dispensary somewhere over on Third Street. And so that, so the people could get that card, then bolted there, and they were leaving there. And we have students who then were using down Third Street as a route home, walking home or walking to the Boys and Girls Club. So it got a heightened concern of the exposure to that. At that time, then, district folks, board members, went to the city and asked them to get involved in setting up parameters for where a dispensary could be, because there were rules and regulations in state of California. At that time, became, they came up with all the maps and all, and it did preclude all these other things. So it wasn't, it was parks, it was preschools, it was the whole thing. There were two remote locations somewhere in town. So there were a number of people that wanted to operate dispensaries who attended that city council meeting. But then they lost interest because of the locations, high rents, whatever. And so the dispensary that was here was shut down, the doctor had the clinic was shut down, and nothing ever came back. So we've kind of been really good with that, up until the folks that can't exercise their right to put initiative on the ballot came forward with this. And if you followed that, you know that the city struggled with having a countermeasure. Costa Mesa has three measures coming up on their ballot. So that, however, that sorted out, and I, and I followed it, they decided not to do that. But that's, so that's just, for me, that's important background, because I don't feel that we have been a missing piece. I think the district has been involved. I can remember when Dave Carter would come here with people from juvenile, that's back in the mid to late eighties, and we'd do big assemblies. We had impact days, where we'd take students out of all their classes, and we would go to these different lectures on health and safety and drugs and... and we would go to these different lectures on health and safety and drugs and the dangers. So I just, I just want to make that really clear, that I really feel we have been very, very on target with that for many, many years, and it takes different forms. So just to comment on one comment that Bill made, because this is, this is an issue that that can cross over, there have been times, I know as a board, we did not get involved in keeping the trailers at a oil trailer park, which we were asked to do, because we had students coming from there, we were, we did not get involved in what ended up being the montage, when the folks wanted to keep treasure oil in there. So that's, those are really political issues that really fall outside the scope of education. For me, this crosses over, because it does affect our students, and so my, my position is to support the city in their opposition, because of, it overrides what has been an effective ordinance for the city to have, to have that, what's been best, and it's for, the city is doing this, not, not, but they have a lot of other issues, but the one for me is the health and safety of students.
Beige, do you have a word?
Sure.
Well, you know, why don't we give you a chance to come up with your demo, let's let them, I'd actually love to hear from you, okay? Let them finish first.
I completely am against KK. I, I think our job is to protect the students, and I think our job is to protect the students, and so this definitely goes along with that. If we can't make our own resolution, can we agree to maybe support the city council resolution? I think that's what I would, I, that's what I would say.
That's what I'm considering, we're doing tonight, I mean, at least one of the things we're doing tonight.
Can we, can we at least do that instead?
We're doing it.
If everybody agrees, agrees to that. I don't need to say anymore. I would like to. Why don't you go?
Okay, so I'm Chloe Bryan, I'm a sophomore at the school, and I don't personally have a position on it, because I don't know much about KK, but I do know much, a lot actually about marijuana use, especially amongst teenagers. And you all didn't grow up in two thousand sixteen, it's a very different year, and I don't have a position on it at all, actually, I just want you guys to know something from the student's point of view, because you guys aren't students. And so here's an actual example of my friend, he's from Dana, so.
Without names, though.
Dana, what?
No, no, Dana's fine, but no names up for individuals.
Oh, I know. Um, another friend, so my friend is an amazing person, and he had a lot of family struggles, and due to this, he started to fail in school. He hasn't done drugs at that time, and after he started failing and having a lot of stress on him, he turned to marijuana. And since he did that, and after his parents found out that he smoked marijuana, his parents completely stopped, took away his phone, took away his pipe and his bomb, and all the things that he's gotten from older people at the coffee clatch and places downtown. We already have many opportunities to get marijuana, and I have been confronted by many. I don't find it interesting to get high or whatever, but it's just needing to be addressed that people like Jack, when it was taken away from him, he went to cocaine and heroin and now is in juvie. So the thing is, is that people need to know about the actual consequence of taking this away, as students, I know students, many students, the majority of students, copious amounts of students, students actually smoke marijuana and do a lot more than that. But the main cause of people smoking it is because of students who are completely overwhelmed with stress, and I think before we take away all of this and add in dispensaries, all these new ideas, we should try to stop it before it happens within a school, because we have three counselors, and there's, they're very busy people. They never have, like, a lot of people don't have time for us. Like, I have to make appointments with my counselor, and I don't really need to all the time, but like for PSATs and many tests that are coming up, we need help, and a lot of times, that's not there for us, and that's one reason. And we have one of the most overdoses in California, if you don't know, like, in our little area, we have many rehab centers, but it's all before dispensaries are put in, just know that we have all those problems before, beforehand. And also, this is an address to one thing that was mentioned earlier, I don't know by who, but it, they said that we aren't given many choices. I actually completely disagree with that, because we are given so many that I feel like it's overwhelming, and I agree with you, you said that we're given so many choices. And for me, we're given choices of taking new classes, I'm taking four APs right now, and that's a lot, but it's my choice, and there's choices of taking theater and taking, being in the homecoming dance, and being in all these things involved in school, and also taking care and getting jobs, all this, we have so many choices that we do need help making some from parents, so.
Well, I want to thank you for your comments, you know, this is, I don't want to get diverted for a second too far. This is an example of the reason I've been asking for so long to have a student rep on this board, because what this young lady just told you is something that you can't get anywhere else.
We're not in school.
We're not in school, and we're not going to school in two thousand sixteen, and we don't know what the experience is. I hear my daughter talk about drug use at the high school, she's there, I tend to believe what she's saying is true, it's completely consistent with what you're saying. And I'm not saying, because you've actually not taken a decision on this, it is so helpful to have that student input. Not that we would necessarily go one way or another differently on this, because it broadens your ability to understand what's really going on, as opposed to when you read one of those healthy kid surveys, yes, that gives you some information, but some information can be a deadly thing. And I love your comments about the fact that people have to be realistic, that this problem is here, cannot turn our heads away and say it isn't here, the fact that some kids are having to go to rehab, and many kids are using, points out a fundamental problem exists in every single, so it's not Laguna Beach, this is this generation, and it's powerful stuff. Well, it goes back, especially in Laguna, but this is powerful stuff that we need to hear, so thank you so much for your comments. And Ked, a few things.
Chloe, I would like to thank you as well. You also brought up the fact that I couldn't have the counselor, I just threw that out there, it's an eighty-third now. My concern is, sorry, the, the state, we all know the state ballot measure is going to pass, sixty-four is going to pass, and it's a done deal. What's, the, this is an end run around that, so they can get a foothold, and then the medical part goes out the window, that's, that's done. So we're, we're screwed there. I, I am glad to know that the current ban by the city will stay in place should the, when this fails, when KK fails. That is, is key. I, I have a bit of an issue with the local politics part you brought up, because we are local politics, and that's just a fact. I, I, I said it last time, I understand that, you know, it's not really under our purview, land use and whatnot, and I appreciate that. I know that we've spoken to our attorneys, and it could be difficult, but I really, I really, really feel that being a local political body, that we should support the other local political body in whatever way we can in, on this particular issue, because to Jan's point, it does cross over. It crosses over with, with our students, with our, our administrators, it, it's, it's a slippery slope, and if they're allowed in, it's one more choice the kids are going to have to make that we could have helped alleviate. Our kids have, they have to make so many choices that we put on them, you know, what our expectations are, and then oftentimes, they, our expectations cause them to make these bad choices or these negative choices. So if we can, as a board, and again, I understand that it's not, everyone's not in agreement, if we can in some way come out with a very broad, we support the city, I mean, I don't, again, I don't know how it works, and Jason, I'm sorry, but I, I just really feel that, that we need to make an overt, concrete effort and send that message, that, that we as a school board absolutely oppose KK and feel that it is in the absolute worst interest of our students.
So if I heard everybody correctly, including Carol, who's not here, there's nobody who is in favor of KK.
Correct.
And everybody feels, incorrectly, if I'm incorrect, I think I said, everybody feels we would like to jointly support the city, including to support the resolution that they have passed. And is this?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Is that where we're at? Okay.
Yes.
So with that, I would like to thank you all and the members of the public, and particularly Chloe. I'll put one more plug in, it's good, stop leaving, it's, that's the kind of thing I put in. Okay, let's then move to reports. Reports, do you remember this, Chloe Bryan?
So, yeah, I'm Chloe Bryan, I'm a sophomore. So this is our school reports. So we had a successful back-to-school night with the help of AFB students, which is a good law, parents go through their child's school schedule, and a part of that, it was a really fun opportunity to help parents and just be like, oh yes, I know where this class sits over there, like, it was a really fun opportunity to help parents instead of them helping us. So next Friday is the house, our first house and representative meeting where students represent their class in discussing and fixing problems at the high school. Next Friday, or this Friday, the thirtieth, is also the Russian Pallet Concert, where many get to perform, sing, and it's really cool. College setting for the PSATs will also be administered through the high school on October nineteenth. Last night was the college back some meeting for seniors. This presentation was given by Ms. Gregory and allowed students to learn how to pay for college through funds given by the state in Laguna Beach. College Roundup is coming up on October twelfth, students can visit and learn more about colleges throughout the country through this convention. Relive, Relive the Life is a high school, it's for the high school, and it's also in a couple of weeks, on October fifteenth. Through this, students can walk for those who have cancer and raise money for further cancer research. Club Roundup was also last Friday in the quad. Through this, students were able to join clubs and become part of our school. It was extremely exciting for me personally, too, because I created the Miracles for Kids Club, and there were so many people in my grade in school that were interested in what I'm attempting to do, and I never knew that that was something that was interesting for other people. Okay, so this is our sports report. Our fall sports teams are all entering or about to enter the Orange Coast League play. Our boys and girls cross-country teams both have their initial league meet tomorrow at Irvine Regional Park. Both teams have a successful pre-league season that is included out, girls taking a trip to the University of Washington. Our boys are heading to Stanford this week after placing first at the Dana Hills Invitational last week. Boys Water Below has played an extremely tough preseason that has included a trip to Santa Barbara to play for the toughest teams in state. While we are not winning every game, our boys are gaining valuable experience that will serve them well in the preseason, uh, season progress. Girls volleyball has parlayed a tough preseason onto undefeated league season to date. Our girls are improving each match with the goal of a league championship and deep playoff run. Boys beach volleyball is undefeated as they start their third week of the season. The boys are working hard in preparation for their upcoming matches. Girls tennis is off to a strong start in the league as well. They have posted two impressive wins in Orange Coast League play with their eyes on the undefeated league season. Girls golf continues to improve, posting wins recently over several league opponents. Our team is young, but gaining experience and improving every time they step on the course. Boys and girls surf, posted a very impressive win over rival Newport Harbor last week, sweeping for second and third places in all shortboard heats. This was a dominating of performance, performance of our coaching staff, or that our coaching staff can remember. The fall season continues to offer our students, athletes, and the opportunities to learn valuable life lessons taught so well through competitive athletics.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our representative.
Uh, we have nothing to do.
Okay, moving on to our CSA representative.
Okay, um, let me see, recently, CSA one thirty-one Executive Board sent out an online survey to our membership. At the beginning of each school year, we like to gain a new sense of what classified staff might be feeling and thinking, so as some of our new, some of the staff are new to the district, or some are new to a school site. So we also send a second survey out at the second semester. We find this is helpful communication tool for HR, administration, peers, and negotiations. And then, as many of you know, each year CSA funds a scholarship for classified employees, LPHS graduating seniors, and, well, it's October, and classified staff will be sending out grants to raise funds for this year's potential scholarship recipients. So just wanted to put that up there. And Thurston's sixth graders just returned from Catalina Science Camp this last Friday and had an amazing time. And website, you can go and check out some of the pictures, you can log on to Thurston's website, check on counseling, six for six, and I think there's a link for Catalina, and several of our classified staff participated in that, so, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody from PTA, boost your school power organizations tonight? Yeah?
Hello, again, um, first of all, Chloe, I am so impressed. Honestly, I've known Chloe since, well, she first came here and stuff, but honestly, I love your just openness and candid, it's just amazing, so thank you for being here as well, it's awesome.
One of the best reports I've heard.
Honest reports, and just amazing, so I love that. And I wanted to recap the last coffee break, and thank all of you guys, were amazing, and though it was underattended, which was really disappointing to me, um, it was honestly the, I mean, the best leaders forum that we've had, I think, ever. The comments were phenomenal, off the charts, loved everything about what you guys did, so amazing, thank you for coming and doing that, and I'm so grateful that they have that on video, so anybody that didn't get to see that, they did tape it, and I've sported to everybody, just going, oh my gosh, look how great we have it, so that, it was phenomenal, thank you. I wanted to let everybody know that there is, the fourth district PTA is having an advocacy training on Friday, Kathleen Fay, of course, is the one leading that, but there will be two guest speakers and then two training workshops, again, it's this Friday, the thirtieth, at nine fifteen AM to noon. The two guest speakers are OC education leaders, Dr. Jeff Hittenberger, and he's the chief academic officer of the OC Department of Education, and he is going to speak on OCDE's role in LCAPs and opportunities for parents to be involved in school decisions. And then Ron Weinberg, is that how you say that? General Counsel at the OC Board of Education will be speaking on school boards and the Brown Act, leadership, transparency, access constraints, and responsiveness, so I know you guys have full schedules, but obviously, you're welcome to, you do have to be a PTA member, so if you're not, then be sure and sign up, see me about that. But I just wanted to recap that. Top of the World does have their back-to-school events, reminder on this Friday, the date, right, the thirtieth?
That's three, three to six, what is the time of that?
Three to six, yes, yeah, it'll be, it's sure a lot of fun, so, I think that's it for you, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, Ked?
Well, I was in Seattle most of the time, since between this meeting and the last one, so I did go to two back-to-school nights, which were great, TOWs and Thurston's, loved those, they did a great job. And then my only comment is, if we are not going to offer woodshop or some sort of, you know, things where you get to use a screwdriver and a hammer and stuff, we need to have an IKEA workshop, because I have put together, I can't tell you how many cabinets and containers and drawers the last ten days, and my daughter stood there like, what are you doing? It's like it's an alley wrench, use it. So I am going to just throw that out there, we need, Jeff, I'm probably, you should be the one in charge of that, you know, when you do a boot camp, IKEA boot camp on a Saturday, all, all high school seniors, we're going to work it, okay?
That is missing for the college program.
Oh my gosh, and it is college, because she's in college. Anyway, slightly PTSD there, but I'm good.
Did you have a listen to that?
Let's see, I also was away most of the time, but since the last meeting, I left that next morning and just got back. But I was given an article by my neighbor that I liked, I, it's a little bit light, but you can deal with that. Anyway, it's back from nineteen sixty-one, and he went, went to school here in Laguna Beach, and it was written by Arnold Pano, who we're very lucky to still have here in town, and, and there are some definite similarities from then to now. He talks about they, at that time, on their school board, they had two housewives, a locksmith, a lawyer, and an industrial research director, and they had to find a new superintendent for thirty, thirteen thousand dollars. Well, thirty-five people applied, and they got it down to five, and the person that they ended up hiring was a thirty-eight-year-old ex-footballer. former teacher, principal, athletic coach, personnel, personnel and curriculum director. And he hired one of his friends as his assistant, who was also in their thirties, and they hired a new principal in their thirties. And he said the biggest fault in the school system, like in industry and elsewhere, is resistance to change. So they looked at things and changed things. At that time, the district had sixteen hundred and fifty students and we were doing okay, but not great. Um, but like, um, Dr. Valero, he is, he, his attitude was, it's very easy for a superintendent to find himself wrapped up in the problems of the three Vs, buildings, buses and budgets. But whenever I'm at my desk too long, I ask myself, what am I here for? And I rush out to the class. I love sitting on the run with the kindergartners or discussing physics with the high school seniors or convincing with the, with the teachers. Um, in the short time he was here, he increased the school day at the high school from six periods to an optional seven. And then thirty percent of the students actually took eight periods. Uh, he also, uh, they were really getting, you know, were really starting to explore space at that time, science was becoming big like it is again. And so the school district held its first math science fair in May of nineteen sixty to celebrate the opening of a new science wing. Townspeople jam the school grounds to view exhibits in biology, zoology, algebra, geometry, physics and chemistry. Um, and to derive further benefits of a nationwide interest in science, or to so, has opened the science laboratories in the evenings of the high school for individual student research. Um, and they're going to try to do that for history and mathematics, for students to experiment on their own time. Then during the summer school in the sixties, students were allowed to work at whatever their grade level was. So for instance, they had a sixth grade summer school class. And what was amazing was it was not one sixth grader in the class. Half were fifth graders, some were fourth, some were third. And my neighbor said their principal came to them and this must have been Top of the World, Stowith or something and said, we're not holding any student back. If you wanna do seventh grade math and you're capable and you're in fifth grade, we're gonna let you do it. Um, so students were, weren't taught conventionally. They were, he just said, give, give to them whatever they're ready for. Um, they also figured out ways to save a lot of money, but I, I love, there was a part in here where now we have all our four C L D classrooms, while other districts were looking at us and saying, how do you have the money for a photograph in every classroom? Well, it, they didn't, we, we didn't have a lot of money in those days, but these guys figured out different ways to get it, so. That, you know, it was their kind of technology, so, anyway. Who was it? That wrote it?
No, no, you said Arnold Pano, but who was the?
The superintendent, or to so.
Were you heard of Jess?
But, anyway, so, for fifty, yeah, that was fifty-five years ago. And we're letting student, students set their own limits. We, that will happen.
I just want to go and ask, Chloe, you're more than welcome to stay, but you're brand new, you don't know, student reps don't have to. I mean, I guess the four A P classes, you may have something brewing at home, I'm guessing.
Yes, four O P classes.
If you ever want to stay, you're welcome.
Four classes.
Uh, yeah, I would be for our summer.
But there's a homework assignment somewhere sitting and watching. Do you have a story?
No, that's it. Well, I didn't have any trips to go, to go on, so I was able to go to the back to school nights, they're always great. What I really think is that parents just can't believe how much work is out already. And especially we had the meeting earlier this year and it's, and it is impressive. So that's always good to see, it's not like spring, that's open house, I mean, there's all, there's a lot going on and it's, uh, of course, with the writing that we're emphasizing, there's just writing everywhere, uh, every level. And, um, we always get good attendance at our back to school nights and it's something that's great about this community. And then I was able to go to a lot of the beginning P T A meetings and, uh, high school meetings spent a long time discussing why they no longer have Bonviance, which was really, you know, interesting, especially for Nicole Rosa, who said she, and I was holding on to it because she was such an advocate for it and, but it wasn't working. And they have something now I brought to fly and call Big Teacher. So that was, they, uh, she did a lot of presentation, uh, Chris Hertzfeld did a lot of presentation and, and Bergen and Lynn Gregory, and when they all were covering everything that they're doing because they promoted Bonviance so heavily as, as being, um, the real answer to that connectedness for all the years and it just wasn't trained out that way. So I can lead these, uh, with the Corea. They also had this hand up, different places, all, all the, all the back to school nights have a parent inter-stake, which is really, I think, uh, I don't know, I don't compare to other districts, but I think probably a pretty unique program that we're able to offer. And, um, it really can be very, very isolating for a parent of a special needs student and not knowing that, um, there are other people who go through similar situations. And as they said every time, sometimes it's just to have that support phone call, just to be able to talk about what they're going through as a family. As they, um, go through educating a, a student with special needs and a whole variety of special needs. Not, um, that's, it's breaking up a lot of myths, I think, but it's a very positive program. I was able to, um, go to a little while to the Delac meeting, of course, it's, you know, I, I get a few of the words. Not at all Spanish. And Alicia was there and Mary Glatten was there and then of course Marissa. And Laura did a great presentation from, uh, I T on using Ares and all the facets of Ares. And, uh, Marissa, and well, Yadi, Yadi translated as he spoke, then she translated everything. And, uh, we all asked a couple of questions, which ended up that they can't access in Spanish. Because they were, you know, I think sometimes they don't wanna ask the parents, they wanna ask that question. And, um, he went over also all of that, the data that you do at the start of the year. And then, um, Alicia told me that the parents were coming in if they didn't have a printer at home, because they print out that final sheet and Donna Todd has been helping. So that was really, I think we're really, really keeping that program going and really helping those parents. And always a good reminder for me when I sit in there, what it's like for them if they walk into a room full and everybody's speaking English and they get a few words like hello or, and the, and the rest of it is just like, uh, especially when the fluent speakers are speaking fast, it's really hard to pick it up. Uh, coffee break on Echo Tammy, it was, um, exceptional, I was really proud. And I liked the whole interactive and all of the different slides and different videos that were shown, because I think that really shows parents, again, it's like, it's like back to school, like you got people that are new here and all this going, going on. And same with the, uh, the I T part of that, really, uh, I was impressed. And, um, I did write in the back, I like getting this, I don't know where, you know, it's similar to a little brochure that we got for years, but it's right on target. And then I picked this up at the library, which I'll, I don't know who gets this, but they are, they are trying to offer and are offering a lot of programs for kids and some for adults too. They, I mean, they have their own book club, uh, with a monthly book there, but this is after school STEM program, the second Thursday of each month. Four thirty, three thirty to four thirty ages, eight up.
We have added a direct link to their kids programs to our community.
Okay, okay, good, because they are, they do offer a lot and I think they're basically free. So they, anyway, I think that's it.
I have somebody's running perfume. I just can't breathe, I'm fine.
I just can't breathe.
Probably my, uh.
Could I breathe equally often?
Kids often.
Uh, just some brief comments, um, I did go to the back school night at the high school. And it was really, you know, I don't know, what can you say, but I, I wanted to make one comment because almost every teacher, if not every teacher, um, talked about it, thanks school power. And it wasn't, uh, it wasn't like someone had said, well, you better go do that, and maybe somebody did, but it didn't seem that way at all. Uh, they do seem generally appreciative of the furniture, of monitors, of the equipment, of the money that comes in teachers' grants, so they can try novel programs. And they also generally spoke about it, and it really kinda go in terms of, obviously appreciate that little bit of extra help and funding and those, yeah. And this happened for, uh, every class, whether it be Spanish Lit all the way to Advanced Chemical Research and so on, so. It was nice to hear that, and I, I don't think we have any school power people tonight, but for the record, I mean, Tammy, uh,
Hey, you're both cool guys.
I mean, he's kind of a vaguely associated.
I'm sorry.
Or, I don't know what's, I never know who's in, who's in and who's out, but, um, I just wanted to make people to know for the endowment and the school power people, the teachers are really acknowledging what they're getting, they're appreciative, it's genuine, it is really genuine.
I noticed it too.
And they're talking about it, uh, to the parents, it, it also helps, that was my experience with that. Doctor Wood, yes.
Yeah, it's been, uh, busy, busy couple of weeks since our last meeting and, um, Jen mentioned the back to school nights and was able to get to all of them and, uh, two as a parent, which is, which is fun too. So, um, I appreciate the board, I know some of you were out town, couldn't make all of them, um, and, uh, I know Deanne was out cycling around and she couldn't. But the general consensus from parents, it was just a happy time. So, uh, getting in and out of those classrooms were, uh, it was something that I don't get the chance to do as often, like it's every single classroom at one time and I was actually able to do that with, uh, Chris at El Moro. Uh, we watched his video, I think, five times, backside video, and maybe even more actually. Um, and, but really nicely done and I'm, uh, appreciative and proud of all the principals for their work and, uh, super principals at, uh, at Thurston and, uh, High School as well. Um, we were, uh, able to attend, Alicia and I, uh, meeting with, uh, the Ocean Institute and talking, uh, how we can continue to enhance our partnership and our student, uh, opportunities there. They continue to expand what they offer. Um, I recall, I was laughing, uh, telling the, uh, lady, lady who runs the program that I can remember going on boat as a young child, not for the right reasons. Um, and I'm very good on boats, uh, to sickness and all, but, uh, I laughed because I was watching the boat leave and I was thankful I wasn't on it. But the, they have expanded so much over time. Uh, they have a dockside lab now, where they're actually doing lab work with some very high-end research institutions, uh, alongside some of their research that the kids are doing. So you pull up things that are run by scripts and next to it is the sixth grade class from some school had replicated the same experiment right there in the harbor. So, uh, that was a great opportunity for Alicia and I, they were very, uh, welcoming to us and offered us the opportunity to have staff meetings there if we need to, or trainings there where we can get some hands-on opportunities and expose our staff to that as well. I did attend a school power meeting with Keta as well, and a down meeting with Bill. I attended Rotary most recently as well, um, one of their lunches, just very thankful of the partnership we have with them. They do a lot of work to support our students, uh, through scholarships at the end of the year especially. And I also had a meeting with the Laguna Art Museum and that was fantastic to get, um, got a, a tour by three different people who knew way more about art than I know, uh, pointing out all the great things that they have there at their, uh, and their forthcoming, uh, upcoming institute where they're gonna have it, there's an artist team that's going to put up ten foot tall mirror. You probably think so at night, but there's like three hundred or four hundred of these things that are going on Main Beach for a living kind of exhibit outside, that's going to be there over the duration of two days roughly, I believe, or something like that.
Yeah, it's going on on Friday and then it will be there Saturday and Sunday and they're three by three, like ten feet high.
Mirrors?
And then mirrors.
Mirrors, and it's been a flipping big, a big production with the city to get this okay, that we down in the sand and every, I think every four feet. Of following line of the ocean.
So that will be a really cool opportunity and our students had their artwork displayed there as well and Alicia and I really listened to that. So again, just a busy time, as we all know, but it's been fun a couple of weeks, so.
Dean, you having a course in that?
No, I don't.
Alicia.
Sure, um, since Margaret's in the speech, I could, actually, sure. Our, um, Launchpad lead meeting that we had last year, she knows a little bit. Um, and we're excited because, um, we have really positive energy in the room and we really feel these are employees who have volunteered or that we've asked to volunteer, um, to serve as leads and point people on our Launchpad pilot. And so they're, they're very, they take an ownership of this program. In fact, a couple have already set up a meeting with the classified staff at El Moro with Margaret to actually go over the program and, and help explain, explain it to the employees there. Um, so we've already started our first few classes, we have, um, started with Haiku, which is now called Power School. So unfortunate timing with the name change, uh, but that would be the first online class that employees take because it orients them to the setup of the online class, so then they can take future online classes using Power School. Uh, we've also, will be starting some social media classes, customer service and time management strategies. Um, some of those are online, some of them are blended, if people need assistance, they can access that. And Jackie Parker's been instrumental in helping us problem solve some of the issues that may come up with the online courses. So, um, we've had a successful start to that program and I'm sure there will be tweaks along the way, but it's nice to see, um, such good collaboration, um, with our classified employees.
Alyssa? Does that say it right? Alicia?
Is that Lisa or Alicia?
They rose by the other day with so much pressure.
So for me, uh, I'm excited about the opportunity to be out and talk with teachers after school, before school. Unless my consent means to talk to every single one before it comes out of a really comprehensive plan, so it's nice to get new to me and spend some time with teachers. But also I really appreciate our administrators walking around and taking into all the question and seeing our kids. Um, I did enjoy our time at coffee break, I appreciated, um, your willingness to host us and thank you for that. Um, it was fun to talk about gases, um, that was awesome. So.
You want to talk about gases, right?
Yeah, yes, yes. So, um, I've been meeting with, uh, members of the community as I continue to nestle into, um, my role, um, with adult education, our committee. Um, I do wanna, um, give a shout out to the Ocean Institute, they will be hosting our N G S S implementation team committees, which I'm really excited about. We'll start planning, um, I'll be co-leading those with Dustin and also, um, so, so we're really excited about that. And, um, thank you to Dustin and Mike Conlin for hosting and coaching training for our teachers. And I was so impressed with Marissa and Yadi at Delac and thank you Troy and Mike for allowing that to happen, thank you.
Thank you, and tonight I think we're adding a new section for our personal report. And we're sure as hell having to do that, yeah, wouldn't it be fun to randomly select someone else to do it?
I think you're just like.
Just kidding, I was supposed to say, wait. Just ready.
It would be, it's a cyber parent, right, saying, someone else. Uh, well, uh, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Valoria and cabinet members and audience members. Uh, I'm, uh, happy to give a report on the opening of school at El Moro Elementary School. As everyone's mentioned, it's been a very busy time, but, uh, it's been a lot of gratifying work. So I'm gonna start, cause I don't know if all of you have met my new staff members, uh, at El Moro. Uh, I'm gonna talk over this, if you'd go ahead, Victoria. It's our new elementary school counselor, her name is Mary Ann Lawson. And, uh, there she is, uh, Mary Ann is very energetic, she's very creative, but most importantly, she's very knowledgeable about elementary school counseling. Kathleen Margarettich is our science specialist and, uh, she's doing a fantastic job implementing the new science lab. And that's my new assistant, Kathy Miranda, who has been, uh, more, more than helpful, uh, in, uh, assisting me with the opening of the school year. Uh, she's very welcoming in the school office and. Can you advance that one, Victoria? Oops. There you go, uh, and she is also learning the ropes as well, there's a lot to learn. Obviously, uh, we have a lot going on in all of our schools and so she's working very hard and I'm very appreciative of that. Our enrollment is currently at five hundred and thirty students, which is a drop when compared to the end of last year, when we were five hundred and fifty-six. A few things to point out about that is our fifth grade class last year was a little bit over a hundred and twenty students. This year we're about a hundred and eight. Uh, our kindergarten class last year was about seventy students and this year we're only at fifty-eight. So, uh, that is the reason for the drop of twenty-six students, because we did enroll forty-six new students, uh, this year who are new to El Moro. Most of these students have come to us from Annalise. You can see when looking at the trend and the numbers, it's small in kindergarten, gets a little bit bigger in first and second grade, it's a little bit of an anomalous, um, a difference maker, I'll, uh, leave that word out. And then in our upper grades, third, fourth and fifth, we always seem to get bigger and bigger as students transition from Annalise and other private schools. Uh, it's also, I think, uh, it's really neat to meet these students from Chile, China, Russia, Mexico, France. They come from all around the world, um, we've had students from. They come from all around the world and we've had students from different countries and uh they're very interesting uh students and it's uh very interesting to talk to them about their school experience in their country and compare it to the experience we have at Elmore. Uh two goals that uh both Mike and I uh are working on this year, principal from top of the world, are meaningful relationships and the growth mindset. And the, these are goals we're gonna be working on uh all year long. And meaningful relationships is very important to me. Uh and Dr. James Comer stated that no significant learning occurs without a significant relationship. And so teachers were greeting students at the door uh the first day of school, regularly welcoming, welcoming them into the school, uh whether it's at recess, staff members are high-fiving students, saying hello, getting to know them in a meaningful way. Um we also want to have meaningful relationships amongst our staff. Uh we learn about each other at staff meetings, we share a little bit about each other and people have already commented to me that getting to know everybody a little bit better just increases that relationship and you feel more personal with each other. And the outcome I'd like to see with that is that we are all helping each other, we're all part of one big family, one big team and willing to pitch in and help out uh when someone has a need. The growth mindset, uh it's, this is a book, there's several of them now, by Dr. Carol Dweck from Stanford University. And she and her colleagues have done a lot of research on the potential of the growth mindset. It fits in very nicely with our social emotional curriculum where we're trying to get students to be persistent, resilient, uh what to do in case things don't go their way. And she speaks a lot about the fixed mindset and versus a growth mindset. And so the fixed mindset is I can't do this, I don't wanna do this, I don't like this, I don't see why I have to do this. Whereas the growth mindset, students can think, well, I can't do this right now, but if I keep working hard at it, I'll be get, I'll get better at it. Um we also went through an activity where there's uh a lot of things that we're all inherently good at. There's a lot of things that we weren't good at, that we get better at. And then there are some things that we're, we're not good at, but we need to keep trying uh to get better at them. So everyone was able to relate an experienced staff member, students, like some kids are good at sports, uh some students are good at reading, some students are good at math. Uh and then I was able to relate how I was good at certain things, um but I can't dance or sing, so I'm working on it.
Giving us a net income?
No, I don't think you're wrong.
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet. And then the other part uh that we're, that we're working on is, and this, this also comes from Dr. Dweck, is uh let's see here, I think, there you go. Um just stop saying you're so smart and I've talked to some parents about this as well and uh staff members know this as well. We, we wanna uh, cause kids think, oh, we're so smart, makes them feel good, but as they progress through the grades and they make a mistake, then they question, am I not, does that mean I'm not smart? And so we wanna uh praise the process and not the person. And so saying things like, we, I really liked the effort you gave on that, um you didn't give up. Uh there are several sayings, there are things that we can say to praise the process and not the person. And that is a hard uh concept, it takes practice. Because it's easy for us to say, oh, you're so smart, because the kids are smart and they do demonstrate their intelligence on so many items, but we learn from mistakes and that's how we get better and that's where a lot of learning occurs is when you make a mistake, so it's okay to make a mistake. And here's a little example of that. Students with fixed mindsets say things like, I can't do it, I don't wanna do it and I'm not interested. Students with a growth mindset say things like, I can't do it yet, but I'll give it a try. I may not be interested now, but I may learn new skills if I give it a try. So when students say, I can't, we say, you can't yet and that is the power of yet. Which brings us on to uh the power of yet. In all of the classrooms, we posted the sign that says, yeah. And I've even said things and staff members and students have said, yeah, we haven't done it yet. And so uh we're, we're teaching everybody about the power of yet and it's really uh, it's really had another positive impact uh on the campus. So facilities update uh on our projects, uh our science lab, which I'm gonna talk about in a little bit, uh our shade, shade structure, which you'll see a picture of. And then uh one of, another one of my goals is redesigning the office. So the work on the science lab is in progress and ongoing. Uh the learning wall was just installed, let's see, it was last Thursday. Uh it was installed and their whiteboards are coming tomorrow, they go on the front of it. Um we have some monitors to go in, uh but it's really coming together nicely. I'd like to thank Jeff and Dean for all of their support on our facilities, I think they look fantastic. Uh so the science lab is exceeding my expectations, is so gratifying for me to have a vision of this science lab on campus at the end of last year and to see uh where it's at right now uh is really beyond my expectations. And the things that the kids are doing is exactly what I had envisioned. We call it steam lab or science lab, you can call it either of those. And again, there's Kathleen, she is fantastic, she's so knowledgeable. And these kids are so well-behaved in science lab, we have not had one issue of anyone having any behavior problems. They're engaged, they're, uh they get some input from her on a hands-on lesson and then they dive right in. Uh this, they were learning about runoff and erosion. They've been making beaches in those little gray tubs. They've been watching how uh the colors run off the volcanoes and the, the crumpled paper uh to learn about runoff uh and, and erosion. And that's just one example of just the great things that have been going on in the science lab. There's our shade structure and uh, I think that picture, I took that picture, I thought it was kinda cool. Um but uh the neat thing about this is I was very concerned that when we, when we went to put the shade structure in, uh we kept, we were digging the holes for the footings and we were hitting utility pipes and plumbing and different things. So we had to move the shade structure six feet away from the wall, it was gonna be right up against the wall. I was very concerned about that and Dean and Jeff told me to relax. And uh I'm, I'm very glad the way it turned out. Actually, you can kinda see the way the sun is, that's in the afternoon and the way the shade, kind of the throw of the shade is where the kids wait when their parents come and pick them up in the afternoon. And it actually gives us a little bit more usable shade that's not going over the wall. So uh it actually turned out uh quite well, even though we had a couple of challenges in installing that. The office environment, um I've been the principal, this is my uh twelfth year at Elmore and it, it's, it's really o- over twelve years old, the furniture's been there since I arrived. Um we're looking, we already moved this, where the desks are located, so there's a lot more space in the office, it's not cramped together. And uh we moved everything away, we got some new artwork on the wall, so we're continuing to move through this. I'd like to create a very professional environment, just like the four CLE environments that we have in our classroom and throughout our school district. I'd also like to put in some comfortable seating for student and parent visitors uh and we have a, a need for more, more file storage for our Cume folders and other mandated uh items that we need to keep on file. One thing that I didn't put in there is the four CLE environment uh in our fifth grade, which came out outstanding. I think a lot of you have seen pictures and heard updates and I'll talk a little bit more about that too in, in just one moment here. And then of course we have data, we have, this is the data from our CASP test. And so uh staff and I are uh looking at data to develop our SMART goals and to uh shape our practice and our teaching methods so that we can improve. And one of the things that I like to point out in both English Language Arts and uh third grade math, excuse me, third grade English Language Arts and third grade math is an example of that. Uh in twenty fifteen, our third grade students uh did not perform quite as well as we would have liked in, uh on the test. Uh but the, the teachers looked at that data and they figured out, okay, this is the first time these third graders have ever taken this online test, the first time we've ever administered it, what can we do differently to help these students be more successful on the test? And as you can see, um they went from thirty-five percent exceeding the standards to fifty-six percent exceeding the standards in English Language Arts and some uh in math, they went from twenty-six exceeding the standards to forty-six percent exceeding the standards. So this looking at data does uh help us with our methodologies. In the claims, which is a little bit different, uh our fourth grade students uh increased their writing claims, that they had a, a percentage increase of eight percent there um in meeting the standards in, in the writing claims. Our writing program is very strong, we do a lot of writing in every grade level uh across the board. Problem solving also increased in fourth grade. Which is a claim that we still need to work on this year, it's one of our lowest areas uh in, in mathematics. And then if you look at fifth grade, last year, fifth grade in twenty fifteen, I should say, fifth grade was our highest scoring grade. Uh they had a large majority of their students meeting and exceeding the standards. So this year the scores, the, the fifth graders dropped a little bit, but when you look at the cohort scores, that is, the scores of the fourth graders going into fifth grade, they actually increased the number of students meeting or exceeding the standards. So there is uh some good news in, in that as well. And of course, the students uh in English Language Arts not meeting standards took a drop from eight to five percent. And again, their cohort score in math uh increased, meeting or exceeding increased by six percent. So we, we do look at various data points to uh increase our performance. And then here's just a little corny Chris study for you here.
Oh, singing.
Go Seelies!
Almost singing.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, it was kind of singing, so.
Got you right, got you right, exactly.
The uh, the, thank you for your support of Elmore, not only uh the Board of Education, not only administration and the community. We uh experience uh awesome community support at Elmore through our PTA, school power and parents in general. So I feel very blessed about that. Uh you can follow me on Twitter at Chris dot E L V and you can see pictures of the four CLE environment there. And of course, you know my email address and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those this time.
I had a quick question on the students coming in from Annalise, you cover various grade levels or predominantly in one grade level?
It's various grade levels. Um I would say the majority of them are probably second grade. Um second grade's a big grade, I didn't really do a breakdown on which grade, but just anecdotally or me thinking off the top of my head, it, it seems like uh second grade, but we have them in all grade levels who've come to us from Annalise.
Forty-six seemed like a lot.
It, it was quite a bit, it was quite a bit.
Especially if you look at me, if you're twenty to one, that's more than two classrooms, right? Is that, so is that, have you tracked the other years or is that unusual? I mean, do you know?
Uh you know what, it's, it's pretty consistent, the number of new students that we get each year, it is around in the forties. Um we've had a few years that's a little bit larger and we've had a few years that smaller. You know, at one time, we had six hundred and fifty students at Elmore. So um we, we've had uh classes where we've had over fifty new students come into our school.
And they lose significance, so it almost ends up with this. But it's challenging because as Chris points out, they don't always come, as we're talking about imperfect little packets, right? So we get them kind of throughout and then it, it, yeah. I know that they got a group of, I think twins show up at El, at the top of the world of Unfind at the last and you just, they have to adjust and thankfully we've got some, have space in our classes to build it, accomplish that.
Yes, our class size is amazing.
Well, Amy, names, is there ever a variation between schools as far as how well-prepared kids are when they come?
Uh from the outside of our schools? Uh yes, yes, there is a difference and um based on the philosophy and belief of those private schools.
I appreciate it, Becky, you did, uh you gave us the cohort data, the, cause I think that's so telling, you know, the fourth graders last year, the fifth grade, and I just, I appreciate that because that's, I think that's as instructive as what the third graders did, you know? I mean, I, I just appreciate that.
Yeah, um I, I always like to look at that data and Amy was very helpful in that as well. Um she always likes to look at those cohorts and not just year to year.
Right.
Uh because it's not really i- i- as telling year to year. And um obviously, we have some very high standards here in the school district and top of the world is performing very, very well and as, as we are as well, but uh that's a high standard to, to live up to.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thanks.
I remember years ago, I'm still wanting to say this thing, my kid got some very good scores like here and says, well, I says, there's goods and bads to this. The good is, it's very, very high issue, the bad news is now that's the standard.
Yes.
Very possibly go down if I don't do something for you. So that, the tough part about succeeding is success.
That's right.
All right, thank you, any other questions? Let's move on to the concept calendar then, is there any items, anybody would like to pull? During them, can I have a motion to approve concept items A through J? All in favor? Okay, if that makes us, uh moves us down to number eight, our information items, this is the monthly financial update of Dean West, the students.
Yes, this is our first monthly report of the sixteen-seventeen year. Uh you can see on page sixty-four, the first part page of our monthly report, uh that the, in the proper tax of harvest, most of that's uh stated, it only has one percent yet, okay? So uh, uh that's traditional until mid-December. And so uh it's uh, and then our local, our federal revenues, we use common reimbursement formats, we kind of take those after a lot of times, the actual expenditures. Meanwhile, uh July and August are ripe for uh salaries and benefits for the twelve-month, eleven-month cycle employees, but in the uh September thirtieth is our uh start of the year, the big table is, so. This kinda shows that, down the bottom, there's special reporting uh for some sort of programs that uh you know, different activity in, that's reported back to as well, four CLE, a lot of that furniture coming in, uh even in late as of August, and those those are pages, potentially, so you'll see a lot of those expenditures here. Although uh, like of course, we've done a great job of getting that furniture twice at the, uh at the starting of full implementation, so you should see a lot of that on the next report. Uh page sixty-five uh shows there any balance as we, in the, in our actuals, uh converted into, how that rolls into sixteen-seventeen school year. Uh so we do run some shift to top to, to uh get to uh with our adopted budget, so what is our aggregate income balance, two thirty-two thousand seven. And then page sixty-six, uh we've uh added this section to the report uh last year in the sense of the monthly cash balance, the report shows in and out um and the monthly cash balance about midsection there and then the projected year end balance of, of fund balance. So on the right of that midsection, we have the Calperts Trusts. You can see, uh we get quarterly reporting uh from them. Uh we can look up at any twenty-day daily transactions that we can look at from the balance, but uh for the physical actual statements, the amount quarterly, so we probably put those there, it shows the balance so far. Um and um the transfers, interfront transfers, more disclosure on the interfront transfers, so basically, as we had last year. So we have, we do make the, the cash transfer to the food service right away uh because uh that is a fully uh reimbursement from the, any, anything that comes to the free produce, uh for the federal state, there's reimbursement, uh and then those, obviously, those meals are cash when you're actually kind of doing a funding network, uh we buy the data at a time. So we, we usually need to fund that one right away. The rest of the, the fund balance sheets and income statements uh for all the other funds are uh included uh in the following pages of the report. Again, we have uh Fund Seventeen, about sixteen million dollars, basically the financial fund that we reach. Again, we have uh fund seventeen, about sixteen million dollars, basically the differential fund, that page seventeen four. And uh uh on the capital facilities fund, last year, we had done the elevator at the high school, we had done a lot of architectural plans. So uh that fund is less, but we will um again be using that uh for projects that are in the year. So it's master plan, um same with fund forty on page seventy eight. You notice that at the end with a six million dollar funding balance, uh we have a uh six point four million dollars to Schneider Electric, which relates to the LED lighting and all the H back, uh about half a million of that is in Prop thirty nine, so that will be there. So pretty much this fund has kind of the funds to cover that contract through the next sixteen months or so. Uh they did start this week uh on putting in some of the big fans into gyms and uh so uh they, so it was already going quite up. So uh so the, you know, the heat that we get this week, that's uh, I know it's long awaited for some of that relief and and so to speak. Page eighty uh has balance sheet for the leased property reserve. And then page eight two has balance sheet for the capital improvement program. Uh and you know, obviously, uh the expenditures for the tract and field, which came out of this program, uh some of them happened in last year, uh as we started that process in spring, late spring. Uh and so uh then completed in this fiscal year. So uh some of that came off that balance, any balance last year, in balance started some of that project and then the remainder will come in. And then we added up page eighty four, we added the Calpers uh quarterly statement that we received, this doesn't do thirty, because it's a quarterly statement. But as of September, we will update to September thirtieth statement. And then we have the uh monthly, the service and operating uh series of accounts detailed following. Same report, same format, it's meant to floor and that's very interesting.
Thank you. Very public comment on this? Any more discussion?
Thank you. Thank you. I really, I really like page sixty six.
Me too.
Oh, yeah. It was very responsive of request to have that information clearly pulled out and easily pointed out.
Okay, bring us to nine, which is the past already, so that brings us to ten. This is the approval of the rev- resolution sixteen dash fifty, support for the National Bullying Prevention Month, Dr. Gloria. Any yeah, there's a motion.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Gloria.
So October is National Bullying Prevention Month and so staff closes at the Board of Education Review and adopt resolution sixteen dash fifteen, which is in support of National Bullying Prevention Month. We do, as we're all aware, a lot of work with our staff and our students around bullying, harassment and creating safe schools on campuses. I know our principals could speak at great detail and great length without all the work that goes into that. It's just a great opportunity for us to recognize that we as the board, we as the board uh agree that this is something that's important for us to main focus on. So I will keep, I won't be going over there asking, I might take this.
Any public comment on this? More discussion? I don't see any, but let me just make a comment. This is really important stuff. We're not by going fast, I have sometimes we go please quickly. This is by no means an indication that we don't have, because we have tremendous kind of material. And we all are aware of the tremendous problems that that this causes, so it's a very serious, it's a jam here.
Oh, we just, we have been working on this, people get asked, I mean, for years, years, we need to get students to be more, basically more kind and more thoughtful. And uh but we also want to learn the way that it's often students bully me, who's got problems, and me addressing also. I think we're all very supportive of this.
I don't think there's any question that everybody is, you know, wants to do as much as they can. And probably the frustration for everybody up and down the ladder is, we can never do it. All right, that takes us to number eleven. All in favor of us? That takes us to number eleven. And uh this is approval to change October twenty five, two thousand sixteen board meeting to Monday, October twenty four, two thousand sixteen. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Uh this is Dr. Gloria, yes.
The Orange County Teacher of the Year, where it's been quit, has been scheduled for the same night as our board meeting. I don't know why they did with our calendar and the minutes. Uh so I believe um we have several people would like to attend, including the teacher we recognize. So we're requesting that we move this to uh to the board meeting one day ahead so that we can uh attend.
Perfect sense. Uh public comment? Or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving to number twelve. To review approval of board policy, financial reserves, this is for Mr. Wes. Mr. Wes.
Okay, so our board policy three thousand one uh has a dean nearest relationship to bring back to the board in September. The uh financial reserve policy, one for your view, uh see if you have any changes to make. And also to recommend whether, what to do with any uh any amount of reserve surplus. So uh we we do, as we pointed out, we own our actuals in August, that we do have about a million dollars carryover. Uh and so uh what we've listed here is all the reasons why, you know, districts have any balances. And we we actually have, you know, all those types of things. And they're all good things to go towards and just like any other things that we're going to decide kind of which or where that reserve is held. There's there's good good points for each one. So uh option one uh basically is to uh wait and see how yours evolves and leave that in at where it's at or enter the other fiscal year at. Uh and then there's options two, three, four, and five, depending on uh preference. And I can go through those individually, um if there's an interest of either um leaving that in the general fund. Do you want me to go through those now or you just kind of?
Well, no, I think that we've all had an opportunity to read it and understand and digest it. So let's uh let's see if there's any public comment first that might, like, that doesn't look like it. So let's talk about board board discussion. Anybody have anything they want to say on this one?
Gosh, it wouldn't make sense, because you don't need, yeah, moving it around.
I agree. I think that was the obvious choice for now, and then later, of course, we can always change.
And it's not gonna, it's not gonna, the state's not gonna make any decisions about, okay, that would be the only.
There's no reason, we have capital facilities uh session coming up on the next study session. Let you give a better picture of what kind of, where the reserve might be.
Make a formal decision after we get that information.
So if that's like option one is the choice of the board, I guess I need a motion for.
A motion.
So does that cover option one?
Yeah, that's what maybe we should be closing.
Okay.
Right, sorry.
So all in favor?
Okay, that takes us to number thirteen. Approval of resolution sixteen dash sixteen, temporary interfund transfer of six million dollars for the special reserve fund for non-capital outlay fund seventeen to the general fund, number one, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Wes.
This is the same uh amount of transfer made last year. Uh as of today, I was looking at the, before I came in here, we have like one point six million dollars in uh cash in the general fund. And in three days, we have two million plus dollar first payroll a year for for teachers. So uh this is a necessary transfer because, like I pointed out in monthly report, it's one percent. We don't, we don't get our property taxes in mid-December. So in mid-December, we get a good chunk of about fifteen million dollars of property taxes. And that's when uh we would repay this uh from general fund back to funds.
I just appreciate you making it an actual, you know, I just the fact, it's so nice to see it, vote on it, now we're back, so there's no need to have any questions. Yeah, temporary.
Any public comment on this? More discussion? All in favor?
It's nice that we can use our own funds that we.
Same, what do the districts do?
So we trans, we do it in the past.
They borrow money from Bay.
They do what in here?
They do a trans, they borrow money and then they have to pay.
You pay for stuff?
Yes, you do.
We used to do it every year.
Man, thank you.
So now we have to do it for ourselves.
That's a preferable way to do it.
Yeah.
That takes us to number fourteen, which is approval of memorandum of under, approval of memorandum of understanding LOU between the college and career advantage C C A and Laguna Beach Unified School District, L B U S D, to employ L B U S D and C C A teachers to offer elective courses at Laguna Beach High School for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen year approval.
Seventeen.
Alicia. You all right? So, oh, good. I won't be here long enough to do that.
So, thank you. This is an opportunity to, first in the proposal, list the additional offerings at at Laguna Beach High School. And it proposes uh the the budget impacts, the payment difference for that, for the the medical hospital careers internship course.
So everybody understands that this is a nice.
Well, I think, just just for clarification.
For the public.
But, yeah, this is what used to be R O P.
Right, and this is our teachers at our school teaching R O Ps and we're paying for the costs associated with that because of the differential.
Yes.
Is that correct? Public comment? More discussion? All in favor? When I first saw that, I didn't understand, so I won't be sure. Okay, moving to number fifty. Approval of independent contractor agreement with the University of California, Irvine Math Project Counseling Services. In the amount not to exceed thirty two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, motion to approve. Alicia.
This is to support um our math support teachers in building a spoken sequence that's proactive and teaches a unit or two in advance for students to help them prepare them for their math section. Uh will provide some coaching in their classrooms uh as indicated by their interest and the option for some additional units for those courses.
Okay, is there any public comment on this? More discussion?
So this is going to be for our, and I apologize, I didn't get this this morning or this afternoon. Uh so this is going to be for the support teachers at the high school. And and they will be teaching this, these classes prior to the students taking, right, I I'm not, I wasn't sure.
Let me explain it, because I had the opportunity to sit down in the agenda planning, I had the same question, no, I had the same question you did. It actually, it's a very cool program, so if you could just expand a little.
So our math support teachers uh teach often concurrently with what's happening in their math sections. So it would bump up the curriculum a bit, so it's a more proactive approach at teaching. Some are doing that now, but it would just create a spoken sequence and lay all that out. And they could request particular um coaching, support and units uh from their math project to develop that.
Okay.
So it's basically a partnership with Irvine, University of California, Irvine, to help our teachers, so they can even be better.
Yes. Yes.
And is it a one year, a one time thing or?
It's a great question. Um I, my hope is that we would grow interest out of the math support classes. If there was interest indicated by the rest of the department, yes.
That's, that was my very same question too, because there's no greater need in any high school anywhere than math. This math is so hard to teach, I have to tell you, you're a teacher, it's tough to teach in some places.
In answer to the question I asked, it may have been came from the support teachers who were asking for assistance.
Yes, when I met with them about supporting their English learners in their classes, they had a capability of providing um content rich academic instruction for English learners. This was an outshoot of that.
And I'm very supportive of that, so I think all this would be of giving whatever resources to our teachers they need to help them in any way. And I especially love if we have partnership with U C I, because they're sitting right over there and they're a great university. My suspicion is they have a lot of folks over here who know math, but.
And could possibly expand to uh middle school also? As far as support for, just from the standpoint that if if students are coming to the high school with not a strong math background, might it be helpful to help the middle or?
They, uh Irvine Math Project supports districts with um K through twelve students. Uh we were the only uh district that they accepted this year. They churned away most new districts.
Oh, wow, wow. How'd you, how'd you wangle that?
All about relationships, right, Chris, Debbie?
And it was, and it's also an option to exceed the math.
Correct, so it's up to exceed, so we've, uh the intent was to build in a little extra. And as we were able to hopefully gain a little bit more interest, that we would be able to continue to expand to offer to other teachers as well. So uh this is very good for us, for especially for our unduplicated students, they're called out in the L cap. Uh we need to primarily focus on brand additional work uh to support these students, because we know they are definitely our most apt students. If they're in a very low grade level math class, will receive instruction in a, in a support class such as this, that they are remixed our aptitude population. So we're excited to be able to bring in an extra resource that hopefully will be able to support our teachers and support our students if they engage in learning math in those classes.
Now, math is the one subject that starts to separate students and starts in kindergarten. You know, so that's developmental, but it stays there all the way through, and anything can do to help math, help teachers with math. I'd be very supportive.
You don't have it, it's really hard.
It's hard when you get even a year behind, because you're behind in math, catching up is tough. So everything we can do to help kids, so that's, so I think great product. Anybody have further discussion on this? All in favor? Number sixteen is approval of job description, teacher on special assignment, visual and performing arts B A P A, motion to approve. Alicia is on.
Okay, so you may remember, um last November, a presentation was provided for you on the uh arts plan uh from the uh Arts Planning Committee. And one of the action steps that was an outshoot of that plan was to create a um coordinating position that supports visual and performing arts. It's a twenty percent assignment at this point. Um and so this is the job description that outlines the duties and we anticipate that that would be a current district employee.
Public comment on this? More discussion?
It's, it seems to me that um to expect somebody to meet with very level T L Cs, and some of the teachers don't even have a background for the standards, but to meet with them about what their needs are and define community resources and design lessons, seems like more of a twenty percent contract. Seems like they're asking a lot.
Correct, so in in we, in the adoption of the arts fund, it was a step by step process. So the first process, we built the description so that we brought it to you once. However, they're not going to do all, there's, you're right, there's no way that this person would possibly in a, in a point two release or for those that, the general public out there, you have one period of release time out of a high school or middle school as a teacher. So the intent is to start with the collaboration of our local community to provide resources. And then as we expand and continue to discuss the arts plan, what are the next steps that are outgrowth of that, which as well is part of the initial plan as well, a follow-up. What do we need to continue to enhance and grow in those areas? So uh we're working with the side principals as well and some of their staff and looking at resources and opportunities to train some more of our our own K five teachers. Uh we have several that will be attending a conference on arts and standards. And uh an outgrowth of the conversation at the museum, uh our museum more recently, was the fact that they are offering through partnership with U C I some fourth grade specific trainings for arts and common core alignment. So uh again, the goal for this person, whoever it may be, initially is just to start with our partnerships, because we have so many resources within our community. And then as as we continue to to evolve, uh we'll adjust depending on what the needs are of uh the the arts plan and what we're trying to accomplish within that plan. So I'm trying to follow kind of the intent of the arts plan, which was this year, the point two, the following years out of it would be a determination of what would be necessary in order to accomplish what we've set out in years two and three.
And they had a, didn't they have a, like a in-service on all of the visual and performing arts teachers last spring? And they all got together and I don't know, I'll put my head in, I think they're.
I think that was, yeah.
They, because I think it's part of the, we're trying to, yeah.
Now, as as part of the arts plan, I know we talked about um the P E, elementary P E teacher, including dance. And that was supposed to happen this year.
So we did send one, uh I believe one teacher went to some training and uh the P E teachers at the elementary school went to training. Uh I haven't been able to get specifics on. I haven't been able to get specifics on exactly what they're planning on doing, though I know that, I believe he went in, yes, he went, so.
Principal Chris is teaching.
Yeah, that's part of his weekly. PE dance, we do that, right? You got that covered.
Yeah, it's like your elementary dance step, I do. And maybe you have some plans to do the dance, you watch a video and all of the dance steps that are like these.
Are they really gonna do that? They are gonna do that? God, that would make me want to eat crayons and get sick. I, that, I would die, I would fully die if I had to do that. That was bad, that'd be a bad softball for me.
It's more like that video, you know, all the steps.
Um, when they're, when they're looking. When they're looking in the community for resources, are, do they have to be free resources? Or do we have funds, like if there, we want lessons done by students from LCAD? Is there money for that, like we pay for ballet teachers, the high school?
For for right now, this is simply the job description and what, as they go out and have those conversations, I think that would be an opportunity for us to shrink back to the board, what might be out there as as further opportunities that we may need to expand upon. Right now, that's undetermined, but we don't know what exactly is out there just yet. So if there are opportunities to partner with LCAD, cultural art design, and we need to come up with some kind of mechanism by which we would possibly pay people. There's a lot of layers to that, because we simply just can't say we would like to pay. We have to go through human resources and develop a job description for that and an agreement with that, or some kind of MOU. So it would be a little too early to determine those next steps. However, I think this is really important to get this one done, so that we can get somebody hired to do this work pretty quickly. Because the, as we know, the year will go by a little bit fast.
Right, right.
So we're excited to get this done, so that we can start having those conversations and branching out and determining if there's more opportunities out there that we might be able to expand on, that would be a great partnership, so.
So the proposal, why don't you start with now, like this time, performing arts? They could have put performing arts posters, those additional ones that we saw on there.
Well, I just.
That's at the high school level, but that's.
Right, and maybe, you know, PTA or something, you know, I I just hate to always ask artists to volunteer. Because many artists, especially students at LCAD, I mean, they're. My daughter had budgets since it is, and then our artists in town, they tend to always still ask them to volunteer.
That's right, the spot, but maybe it won't. Does that present any possible issues if you pay people, remember the costs?
Um, yes.
I'm thinking workers' comp right away, by the way.
Well, there's, any volunteer is actually covered under a worker's comp policy.
Right, I know that, that's what I'm asking.
But with the volunteer piece of it, we have to make sure they're live scanned, fingerprinted.
They still have to be vetted.
They still have to be vetted through our process if they're our employee. That's why memorandum of understanding is a much easier process if the agency that's employing them or supervising them, like student teachers, for example. Universities are the ones who make sure that their people are vetted and before they send them to us. We don't endure the cost or the requirements of, you know, putting them through our process. They come to us all ready to go.
I assume that would be true for, say, a walk-on coach as well, right?
Walk-on coaches are our employees, so they do go through our fingerprinting.
And screening and all that, so other than that, but I suppose, other than that, but it sounds like it's possible to pay them if you have the desire to.
And that's the key, is the partnership with, if we're gonna have a partnership, if we could come up with a MOU between, between cultural art design or some other institution that wants to do that, then it makes the, makes it a lot easier and much smoother to just bring people and rank them.
It's just like what we do with ROP or CCA, it's exactly the same, yeah.
Correct, very similar, correct, yeah.
And at least if you screen it, you can't screen through that fingerprinting. It's one kind of thing, especially elementary, you know.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion on that one? Takes us to number seventeen. No.
On favor?
Oh, on favor? Number seventeen, authorize the assistant superintendent of business services to file a notice of completion, NOC, for the installation of two divider walls at the top of the world elementary school by Worldwide Construction. According by the county court, a quarter, motion to approve. Mr. West or Mr. Dixon?
Yes, these were a word under a green carpet, but any, and those products are complete, so file a notice of completion on them. And so these, these were creating walls within the side of the top of world work room and then a different classroom, small office space.
Feels good.
Yeah, and those two created additional office spaces. I'm not too sure which staff first, was that part of that council?
It was, well, counseling, basically, the, with the science, addition of the science lab, we displaced our Spanish teacher had had a, had a spot in the room, our computer lab instructor had a spot in the room, or, sorry. I shall come. Um, with the, good evening. With the addition of the science lab, we displaced four staff members, we need to find a home for that. So the wall went up in the PLC room, about making a third office, one third of it being office. Julie Dugan moved into that space, her counseling office is now being used for Jake Senior Fritz and Lita Davis. Then the work room was was shrunk by about a third, and that's now being used by OT, APE and and speech. So it creates some, some homes, some much needed homes for our folks.
Thanks for the comments.
The recording, the cover?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not that big, I mean, I guess it's bigger than thought.
We are creative and it 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 functioned great, so it worked, thank you.
It looks wonderful. And they're very happy with it.
Yes, they are.
Public comment? More discussion? All in favor? Moving to number seventeen, motion for justice to judge.
I'll tell me.
No comment, I don't think. Our next meeting is October eleventh, two thousand sixteen. It's a two-board study session, it is. What's a two? Oh, it includes two boards, say. Okay.
So how was it, was it better annotated?
Sorry? Yeah, I think everybody said yes.
Yeah, we all mumbled it up.